So yeah, we have a long call today with Kisi in regards of the operation for the R and D. We are also working on the dashboard for consent process. So all what Fanny was mentioning about the system we are creating with tiers and market caps or budget cap. So probably later we have some news for the community members to join an open discussion here. Probably after we have the draft for this first system we have already discussed, how we can really have a place for collaboration with this, where we can present concerns and where we can suggest or recommend things to improve on proposals, how to improve engagement and all these things that were, they're not about budget caps. They're about making guilds and work more efficient and to have a better interaction within. So I went through the Meta Color Lab. I just want to update on what we're doing. Also, yeah, integration is coming. 25th of November, we're going to have news about the database and more to come. But going back to the Meta Color, I'm gonna pop again here the survey. If you guys want to join in forces and have any ideas tomorrow or now on our R and D weekly meeting, we're going to keep developing the program. So open discussion. Everyone is invited to join. So looking forward to see you guys there. Thank you, Fodji. That would be done.
All right. Thank you very much, Germa. Thank you for the updates. And it's, I think the link is in the chat. We dropped it in the chat for everybody to participate in the survey. And yeah, so I think the Latam Guild X Space, I think the last time it's for, also, if I'm not being mistaken.
Yeah, but let's do something different. I know Sergio is here from the Latam Community. He's, he was leading the X Space initiative about the ecosystem update last week. So probably Sergio, sorry to put you on the spotlight, but if you're up to it, I'm gonna drop here the title of the space we're gonna execute this Thursday, 22 hours UTC. But Sergio, if you're there, if you want to tell the community what is going to be the topic about this Thursday? Sergio's on the streets. Okay. And it's very noisy. La Paz, Bolivia is a very noisy city. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this. So yeah, later I'm gonna share on the ambassador's general chats. The, we're gonna execute our third Latam Guild X Space on our ex account, snet underscore Latam. Everyone is again invited to join tomorrow. It's gonna be, so we're working on the program. We have a specialist in this side and also Inez has a lot written and also read about the topic. Tomorrow is gonna be all about, give me a minute. Yeah, so this is it. Yeah, I just texted to Vani. It's here. So it's gonna be, let me get the translation for this. Almost there. Sorry for that. Vanessa. There you go. Okay, so tomorrow Latam Guild X Space number three. So tomorrow the, no, not tomorrow, sorry. Thursday, the 14th, 22 UTC, biotechnology and transhumanism. And we're gonna develop with UVA spinoff and have a product explain and an update on the project that have achieved very big milestones this last quarter. So if you want to get some news in Spanish, of course, about it, looking forward to see you guys.
Yeah, have you got the Twitter account that it's gonna be on handy?
Yep, 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 yep. Let me, let me put that on the chat. Thank you, Vani, for the reminder.
Hey. Okay, thank you very much, Germa, for that. Thank you. Even though you were thousand impromptu presentation from you. Thank you very much for doing that. And yeah, the link to the space, sorry to the Twitter handle is right there in the chat. So we can join in at the set time. Yeah. Yeah, so we can join in at a set time and yeah, share them up and try to participate in the space also. I think that's a good, that's a good time to participate also. And I don't know if we should go back to the, what we left behind at the first place. If I'm not mistaken, I think our awareness on certification program, I don't know if there's anybody yet to speak about that. I still don't see SA. I don't see anybody from the education queue. So maybe we just have to skip that and come back to the budget cap, which is for people to like give their opinion. I don't know if it's a good idea to make you put a vote down. Maybe Germa, maybe you can quickly make your votes, a poll, so that every people can consent to the agreement or not. I don't know if that's possible, but I think that's a very good idea to use. Germa, did you hear me? Hello? Very good. Okay. Okay, I think Vani says in the chat that it's not, shouldn't be, shouldn't be a decision-making process. But okay, so maybe we can put it on the, on the chat. Maybe we can put it on the chat and maybe that will be a good, maybe in the ambassador's program chats, maybe everybody can maybe give their opinion about it. Maybe, I don't know. So what do you guys feel? What do you think, Vani? What do you think? Olopuji, we have AJ, what do you think about that? Oh.
I'm just wondering if anybody here from any of the workgroups who's had a little look at it, have you got like a first reaction? It's not going to be like a decision-making thing, so you don't have to worry that what you say will kind of decide anything. But it'd just be nice to know what people's gut reaction is.
Maybe we could just use some people. I think we have some representative from, not representative, but we have members from the marketing guild, we have the work PBO, we have, yeah, I think we have also the writers, I think we have Nikasa from the writer, we have Olopuji, we have Advanced Mayo from the marketing guild. I don't know if that's, they can maybe give their own opinion about it. I'm sorry, Vani, what did you mean by opening it up for discussion? Is there anything added? Can't hear you or just can't hear anybody speaking, can't? I mean, I think we can move on since nobody, nobody was talking about it, so I think we can, but that's. Sorry, is everybody with me? I don't, I'm not hearing anybody. Okay, Advanced Mayo just said he just got it some minutes ago, so probably he doesn't know what's going on. So Advanced, if you can hear me, we had, we had from the governance workgroup, there's a meeting held and suggested that we have budget caps instead of consents, instead of concentration. So there's a marrow board there that explains everything. There's an explainer for everything. You can take your time, maybe when you are settled or something, so you can take your time and try to put and yeah. So I think in the absence of, we can, I think there's some conversation going through the chat. Well, for me, I actually think it's a very good idea instead of, instead of going through concentration rounds, because I think every workgroup should be given a cap to work with. So they don't exceed or they don't go below. So I actually think it's a very good idea, my own feeling. Welcome, Onyeka. We are welcome, Kizi. So you're doing with the, so can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Thanks.
Yeah, so we were just discussing about the governors. It's in the IELTS day and they're like, there's a new idea now that says that there should be a budget cap instead of having to get concentration rounds. So we're just trying to get people's opinion about it, if it's a good idea or not. So what do you think about that? What's your opinion about that?
Oh, oh, okay. I was into this government, so I've already shared my opinion there. But if you still wish I should still say, speak on it?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, so I like their system because it eliminates something like the stress of going to concentration rounds and also budget fitting. It eliminates budget fitting as a whole. These are the positive sides of it. On my side, one of the negative sides of it is it limits expansion in a way, because we all now have a specific amount to work with. Well, it's not really anyone's fault. The program's budget itself is not even increasing. So that's, that is one of the major issues so far that I would like to mention in the governance call. But I think it's a nice system and for the allocations itself, I have some, I expect some, I have some suggestions on it though. But the system as a whole, I think is nice.
Okay, thank you very much, Onyeka. Thank you. I think that you, we shared a same opinion about it. Because my own opinion is that, yeah, it's a very, very good idea because it takes up so much stress. Basically takes up stress from everybody. Don't have to, I'm saying, yeah, consent to these, I consent to them. But everybody has a particular amount to work with and if you don't exceed the amount, you don't go below that. So I think it's a very, very great idea for everybody to work with. Yes. So I, okay. Okay, sorry, SA, welcome. You're welcome, SA. And I, we already skipped you, but we are coming back to you, okay? So concerning the awareness on the certification program, do you have an update on it today?
Yes, yes, I do. So sorry, I joined in late. Thank you so much for keeping a space for me. I didn't even know I had space. So for the certification program, it's coming great and maybe a lot of people are now taking part. And I have a bit of news for Onisi. I don't know if she's in this call, but I think people are after you, Onisi, because currently now I think you are ranking number four. And we have Sophia, who is ranking number one. Well, it looks as if she's kind of like stuck. And then I think we have Malik and one other person that's leading, that's the three people. I can't remember the person's name right now. But I'll post it before, like by tomorrow, but Onisi is gonna like on the fourth position. And it's kind of like still open for everyone to participate. Like we said, it is just for us to, you know, get to test our knowledge and get to know more about the ecosystem that we are working with so that we can confidently push it out there to other people. We also have less than 20 days for it to wrap up. And we all know that it's supposed to end, end of November, so we have roughly less than 20 days. No, before end of November, actually. So we have less than 20 days for it to end. And we'll be announcing the results very soon. But we all can also still participate. And don't worry, feel free, even if you don't get it, you're still going to get certified when you complete it anyways. And we also are going to be rewarding the first three persons that are ranking by the time we round off the program, which is less than 20 days from now, and also open it up to everybody to post, to test, to test it out and, you know, up their knowledge about singularizing ecosystem. Also, if you have some blockers, maybe that's the reason why you've not been able to progress. Maybe you're having issues with some, some, like taking the courses. You can just go to the certification programs channel and just drop your questions there. They have people down standby that would give answers to your question. So yeah, that's the updates I have. We'll see you with more updates by next week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, S. Thank you for the updates. And I'm sure Onisi will, she never saw it coming, never saw it coming, because I think she was at the top for a long while. So it was very good. It's good at, it's very competitive. And yeah, that's what we love to see. We love to see everybody showcasing his own talent in giving us knowledge about the whole ecosystem and that. So it's very good.
Yeah. Also, there's something that we noticed. When people step into the, I don't know if I can share my screen, I can't. When people like enter into the classroom, they just stop at, they just stop at, okay. They just stop at a particular place. So I don't know, maybe it's because they don't know that you are supposed to click and move on. So they just only just go into the classroom. So we had many people that are currently in the waiting room, but they've not attempted any question whatsoever, right? Yes, so I'm just going to do like a quick walkthrough. So I don't know if you can see my screen. You can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so when you login into the classroom, ideally you are supposed to use a, what is it called now? The code. So immediately you put the code, it's going to take you to, this is going to be like this, right? So it's just going to show you only classroom as you're supposed to click on it to get started. So you click on it. And then you click on this. And then you click on view details. And then you attempt or question, right? So, what's that? So you can just click on this place here. When you click on this, it takes you to where you have to start. So you need to input your name and then you just go for it. So I think most people are, I don't know, maybe there's like a blocker there, maybe there's like a blocking condition there. So we just have people that starts, like they hop into the classroom, but they don't take parts. I don't know if that helped someone, if this little demonstration actually helped someone to be able to beat Sophia through the chase, because we still have a lot of time to still beat her to the finish line. She's not yet at the finish line yet, so it's open for everybody, right? Thank you.
So I think what I suggest is that maybe those people, if you have maybe like the names or maybe, I don't know if, how they register, but if you have their names put down on the LLM, I think that's of the LLM platform you guys are using. So if you have their names put down, you can also try to like message them and maybe like a follow-up with them and probably ask them why they are stuck and where everybody is stuck. And I don't know if that's a great idea for you guys to just understand that.
SA, I was just gonna ask, when does the certification program close? What's the closing date?
SA, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm yeah, I'm yeah. So it's supposed to run for 1.5 months. So as it stands, I think we have, the last time we had the chat, which was on Wednesday, it was 24 days to go. So subtracting that to where we are at right now, so it's less than 20 days. So I currently, I think by next week.
Right. Because what I'm thinking is every time you've kind of raised it, there's been a few people going, "Oh, I'd like to do that." And they're not sure of their core contributors. So I'm thinking we're gonna have to recalculate who is a core contributor soon anyway for the budget decision. So maybe if we could do it sooner rather than later, it might mean that a few more people who want to do it would be eligible to do it. So maybe we should just have a word with Tevo or whoever and just go, "Can you recalculate who is and who isn't a core contributor?" Maybe if we pinged him tomorrow and asked.
Yeah, that sounds good. You're right, Vani, because we have people that wants to test it out. But so this is like the first test run. After now, when we are done with this first phase, then we open it up for everybody to actually participate. But then there's no like rewards to it, right? It's just certification. And it's just to help us to also trickle down the numbers of people that should have been absorbed into the ecosystem and also solve all of the major problems that we are having currently. So but are you suggesting that we hold off the closing dates just to accommodate the people that are supposed to be core contributors, but they are not?
No, I was kind of thinking maybe we just kind of expedite the recalculation of who is a core contributor, which we're gonna have to do soon anyway. But since you're saying that before too long, it's going to be available to everyone anyway, maybe it's not that urgent. But Sergio is in the chat going that he'd really like it. So maybe, yeah, maybe we should just message Tevo and ask him to recalculate who is a core contributor sooner rather than later. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's for that. And if I wrong, I think we're done for, I don't know, or, yep, so, sorry. So maybe if there's an open topic, anyone wants to say something outside the scope of today's agenda, you can always bring it up. You can bring it up and yeah, bring it to the bigger tables so that everybody can, or you can get the right answers to your question or the topic, yeah. Is there anybody? Is there anybody in the chat? I think, Onyeka, you are, you can go for it, please.
Yeah, Fodji, did we mention, let's say, do we have for marketing guilds? I wanted to know if those mentioned for the mascots voting. Was it mentioned?
No, no, it wasn't mentioned, I think. Yeah, I think SA can give more on that.
All right.
SA.
So do you want to go for it?
Oh, you can go for it if I say. Okay, SA wants to go for it, sorry.
Yeah, so I think we all know that we had like a mascots campaign that went up. It was really fun. We had some interesting entries and kind of like had, kind of like love to see the creative side of. kind of like had, kind of like love to see the creative um side of the community being, you know, put life and um thanks to Karen that organized that. So we are now in the final lap where we want to in, in, um we want the winners to be determined by the community. Um, we've been able to, the graphics uh workgroup have been able to narrow down the entries to three or to four, yeah, to four, and um we'll be sending out a form, so you can actually check out these mascots and also vote for your favorites. And the winner is um the winner, so if you know that, so we'll be putting out an announcement and letting you know the people that qualified for the voting round. So if you are part of the winner, you might want to reach out to your community so sensitized and get people to vote for you. Because you know that for you to win, you have to have more community votes. So um we'll be posting that out by tomorrow on our Discord and on our social media platform, it's a form. So you just get to fill the form and select the mascots that you think best represents, where most uh hmm hmm best represents Singularity Net. And um the good thing is, we would not be using these mascots in our designs, create comics, um maybe we can advance it to putting life in it and making an admission and having like an admission series and whatnot. There's a whole lot of plan for the mascots, so we really love the input of the community, not just the ambassadors for everybody to put in and vote for who they want to be, which mascots, not, not even the person, but the mascot that they think represents Singularity Net the most. It's, it's supposed to be fun, so let's have fun while doing it. Thank you.
Um, I see you have um a mail in the box. So it's from
Okay.
From Sergio, which says, may I ask about when will the mascot contest award distribution of? Okay, I think the distribution date of the reward, just to know the approximate date, maybe.
Yeah, go ahead, let us know.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you very much. So I think next we have the introduction questions at the same time. For introductions, I think I've gone through the um the people present, and I don't think I have seen a new person, but just to just to make, just to market end up for today. Just to market that as for today, um and to appreciate everybody for coming. We have the uh thank for coming to the one hundred and twenty third town hall meeting. And I think this should be among the last series of town hall we have for this year, and it's been a long, long, long journey to just host a town hall and to have a town hall for everybody, where everybody comes to um give the initiative, to give your plan, to give us updates also. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ronnie. Thank you for us, thank you, S A, thank you, Sergio, thank you, Nikasa, thank you, AJ. Thank you, Advanced Mayo, thank you um, so sorry, thank you, Onyeka, thank you, Daniel, F M, and to myself, I say a big thank you. So there any question for the day before we puts everything to a close?
Thanks for hosting.
Yeah, just to say thanks for hosting at such short notice.
You, thank you. Okay, I don't think there's a question for anybody. There's still a question we have, like, we have five seconds for you. You have a question. I think Ronnie can walk with five seconds. She has a question. She talks really fast. So, yeah, so the next town hall meeting holds on Tuesday, November nineteen, twenty twenty four. Eighteen U T C same time. So I pray everybody to come and to give us the updates that you have, to share what you have with us, to share your plan, your, maybe your our work group, the plan for your work group, your what you have interest in, what you don't have interest in, what's if, what suits you from the part of governance, whatever you want to say, whatever you want to share with the whole community, you can come in and yeah, give us that. So I think that's all for today, and I thank you everybody once again for coming for today's town hall. Your presence is not, is not left unnoticed. I noticed everybody's presence and I appreciate your contribution. For those who types, even just a two stop, I thank you also. Thank you everybody for today. And I do hope you have a wonderful week ahead of you. See you next time. Bye, everyone.